We will go ahead and call this meeting to order at six or four oh four. This is the specially called City Council Meeting for May the eleventh, two thousand and twenty. This is what we call the role, please.
Mayor Bill Hastings. Mayor Pro Tem Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Duran Dowdell.
Here.
Councilmember Jennifer Jordan Stockdeck.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I'd like to welcome Pastor Darryl Walter with the current Christian Church, and he will be offering our invocation this evening. Following that will be Captain, or boy, I change your rank every time. Corporal Papiopina will lead us in the U.S. pledge and the pledge to the Texas flag. Pastor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we thank you first of all that we know that the effects of the coronavirus and the challenge we've all been through could have hit our community much worse, and so we first of all want to give you thanks for being with us through this challenge. And we ask that you would be with and heal each person in our community affected by the virus, and we ask for their health to be restored. Lord, we also ask for your wisdom and guidance to be with each business owner affected by the challenge that we are facing. Lord, we are grateful for every leader, every first responder, every medical professional that has risen to meet this challenge, Lord. And I ask that you continue to give our mayor and each council member wisdom as they make decisions and guide our community forward. Lord, we thank you for the things that come to light during challenges like the one we're going through. It brings out many times the best in the people around us and in ourselves. And so, Lord, we pray that you would help us to be a light, a caring soul, a generous spirit to those around us, Lord, and may our city be better off at the end of this challenge than before. Give guidance, direction, wisdom, and blessing to those gathered tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor.
Thank you.
Please stand. The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and the Bible with liberty and justice for all. The pledge to the Texas flag. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and in the Bible.
Thank you, Corporal Pena. All right, our first order of business is we have three proclamations to give tonight. The first one will be the Katy Police Department is National Police Week. This proclamation honoring National Police Week, May the tenth through May the sixteenth of two thousand and twenty. Whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed May the fifteenth as National Police Officers' Day in the calendar week in which May fifteenth falls. As National Police Week, established by a joint resolution of Congress in nineteen sixty-two, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas police officers of the Katy Police Department stand watch over our citizens, selfishly risking their lives to protect individuals, families, neighborhoods, and property against crime. And whereas February, excuse me, whereas Friday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, is observed nationally as Police Officers' Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community and have become disabled in the performance of duty. And whereas the Katy Police Department, past and present, who by this faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered dedicated service to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bill Hastings, Mayor, do hereby proclaim May the tenth through the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, as National Police Week in the city of Katy, Texas, and hereby publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. In witness thereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Katy, Texas, to be affixed this eleventh day of May, two thousand and twenty. Signed, Bill Hastings. The following proclamation is in recognition of National EMS Week, May the seventeenth through May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Whereas in nineteen seventy-four, President Gerald Ford authorized EMS Week to celebrate EMS practitioners and the important work they do in our nation's communities. EMS practitioners safeguard the health and safety and well-being of their communities. And whereas EMS practitioners provide day-to-day life-saving emergency treatment services of medicine's frontline, and they work around the clock to make sure that emergency medical care is quickly available. And whereas EMS practitioners are always ready, ready to go at any time, ready to help whoever is in need, ready to face whatever situation awaits them on a scene, always prepared for the next emergency and the next call from a member of our community in distress. And whereas brave men and women who serve as EMS practitioners are often the first on the scene of a motor vehicle crash, the scene of a disaster or other events that take place in hazardous environment, it is important that we take time to honor these frontline medical responders. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bill Hastings, Mayor, do hereby proclaim May the seventeenth through the twenty-third of two thousand and twenty as National EMS Week in the city of Katy, Texas. And hereby salute EMS practitioners for being ready every day and preparing for tomorrow and the many tomorrows to follow. In witness thereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Katy, Texas, to be affixed this eleventh day of May, two thousand and twenty. Signed, Bill Hastings, Mayor. And the third one is recognizing National Public Works Week. National Public Works Week proclamation, May the seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. It starts here. Whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance and sustainability in resilient communities to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Katy, Texas. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Katy, Texas, to gain knowledge of and maintain progressive entrance, interest, and understanding of the importance of public works and the public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year two thousand and twenty marks the sixtieth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Resolved, I, Bill Hastings, Mayor of the city of Katy, do hereby designate the week of May seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, as National Public Service Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the national American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. This year's theme for the two thousand and twenty National Public Works Week is "The Rhythm of Public Works", which challenges our public works members and our citizens to think about our community as a symphony of essential services, working in concert to create a great place to live. Every community has a rhythm, a heartbeat that reflects this essence and tempo of life. In witness thereof, I fix my signature and seal of the city of Katy this eleventh day of May, two thousand and twenty. Signed, Bill Hastings. Alrighty. We will move on to item number four, which is public comments. And I would like to remind the audience that they have three minutes to speak. On any item that is not on the agenda, the city council cannot respond. Is there anyone who is participating via teleconference that would like to speak at this time? Please press nine or raise your hand. And if you do, we would like you to state your name and address.
Seeing none, Mayor.
All right. Seeing none, we will move on to item number six, which is consider approval of meeting minutes.
Five.
Do I have a motion to approve minutes as presented?
Mayor, you skipped number five, which is comment from the public on any item on the agenda.
I did what?
You skipped number five, which is opening it up for comments from the public on items on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I thought I did that. Is there anybody who would like to speak to any items on the agenda? Via teleconference?
If so, just press star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, hearing none, we will now move on to item number six. Consider approval of meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve minutes as presented?
Move, approve minutes as presented.
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Harris, second by Councilwoman Stockton. All in favor, is there any discussion? Having none, we will move on to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number seven, consider a resolution authorizing the issue of unlimited tax bonds series two thousand and twenty by Harris Waller County's Municipal Utility District Number Two, not to exceed three million, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This is in reference to Falls and Green Meadows. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Court, seconded by Councilman Harris. Any discussion? Oh, Dowdell, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven B, consider a resolution authorizing Mayor to accept grant from United States Health and Human Services for COVID-nineteen provider relief funds in reference to the fire department.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by now, and second by Jennifer Stockton.
Good sir.
Is there any discussion? Having none, all in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven C, consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign professional services agreement with Safe Built Texas LLC for third-party inspectors. This is in reference to Public Works Building Department. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, second.
Motion.
Stockton.
Stockton, second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, just real quick, this is a great idea. Glad we're able to move forward with this. This'll help in that heavy workload and is very customer-oriented. Glad we're moving forward with this idea.
Thank you, Councilman Harris. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven D. Seven D two. TFR Enterprises Incorporated is secondary contractor for debris management services. Contract ends June twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty. This was approved by City Council on six twenty twenty of two thousand and eighteen. Resolution eight eighty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Chris Harris, second by Councilwoman Court. Is there any discussion?
I just want to make a comment, just to be clear, that this debris removal, it is for disaster removal and has nothing to do with residential trash or anything like that.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we need to do aye.
What?
We skipped seven D, aye. And went straight to seven D, aye, aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I added that. Seven D. The, uh, Service Environmental Services Incorporated is the primary contractor for debris management services. Contract ends six twenty-five, two thousand and twenty, approved by City Council on six twenty-five, two thousand and eighteen. Resolution eight eighty-two. This should have proceeded when we just rolled it on. Do I have a
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Chris Harris, seconded by Councilwoman Court.
That was, Mayor, that was Councilmember Dowdell.
I got it.
Okay.
I'm gonna let you hear Becky, because I
Good job, Becky.
I'm doing the best I can at guessing.
No, you're good, you're good. I got it. I'm used to everyone's voices, so.
Brandon, may we just start waving our hands?
Really?
I can And I need to do the same as well.
Frank, sit back and relax.
Frank's just sitting there chuckling, he turned his camera on. All discussion, all in favor.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Question, uh, now, how I read this contract, there's no financial impact unless we use the service, is?
That is correct. It's only for an emergency event.
Okay, so we're just basically reserving them for hurricane season?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to seven D, aye, aye, aye. Tetra Tech Incorporated is monitoring contractor for re-monitoring services. Contract ends June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, approved by City Council on June twenty-fifth of two thousand and eighteen. Resolution number eight eighty-one. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seventy, Katy Development Authority. Texas Heritage Parkway, Katy Development Authority project to be awarded by Metro Funds one ten or I ten at Peterson. Item number seven, I. Consider a resolution, authorization, Mayor to sign an amended and restated interlocal agreement for county managed mobility project, Texas Heritage Parkway. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number seventy, I, I. Consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the Texas Heritage Parkway roadway local agreement by and between Waller County, Portland County, city of Katy, Texas, Texas Heritage Parkway Improvement District, and Landmark Industries, Landmark Industries Holding Incorporated, and Peterson Road Center, one thirty-nine LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
All right. Two real quick questions. What's the timeline for the overall completion of the roadway?
Rich, are you on?
I am, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So the goal would be to, we've actually bid about three-fourths of the project. The goal would be to let, I'm sorry, issue notice proceed on those contracts sometime this week. If all the agreements get approved. And then we've got sixty more days of text out approval and the piece at I ten. And then we would bid and let that contract, and have the project completed in about fourteen months.
Okay, fourteen months. And then the metro through the city of Katy is contributing five million, if I read that right? Or is it, or is it half of five million because of the landowners?
Yes, but I believe the commitment is Katie's and the KDA's commitment is up to six million is their share.
But that's over a twenty-year period, Chris.
Right.
Okay.
But Chris, did you hear that? It was not committed six million plus interest, not five. Plus interest. Yeah, yeah. If I may, if I may, counsel, what, what they're gonna do, the, the county's gonna, gonna issue the bonds, and then we're gonna, we're, and then part of this is in an agreement to, to pay off all share of those bonds. So it'll be, it'll be approximately six million dollars plus interest.
Okay, and just trying to get to the point that for, for people to understand that it's metro dollars through KDA that's paying for it. And my math, what, it's eleven, only eleven percent of the roads in the city, and that's our share. Would that mathematically come out, is that about right?
Yeah, it's about right. It's about, I'm sorry, Eric, go ahead.
Yes, that's about right.
Does this affect our debt service?
No, no, the county's gonna issue the bonds.
Okay. Perfect, yeah, I think there was a little bit of confusion on the, the financial impact from what the actual city of Katy. We're just the, we're just releasing the, the funding from KDA. It's a metro source of funding, correct?
Right. Yeah, it's, 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 it's city, city funding through the agreement that the city has with, with metro to, to for, for mobility through those, through those self-tax, self-tax funds. The KDA is a, is a city-created, city, city-run, a local government corporation. So, so you, you approve everything that KDA does. But those funds are funds that come from the agreement that the city has with metro to provide mobility in the greater Katy area.
Right, and, and that money can only be used for mobility projects in the city.
That is correct.
Thank you very much. Answers my questions.
Is there any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number F, consider a resolution authorizing Mayor to sign a second amendment to master development agreement. Katy Development Authority, city of Katy, Texas, and the Katy Boardwalk Hotel, O M C, as predecessor in interest of KBH Venture. Katy Boardwalk Hotel. Do I have a
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same carries. All right, councilmembers' reports. We'll start with Councilman Duran Dowdell.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope everybody had a wonderful Mother's Day, and I hope that everybody is remaining and staying safe. I've, I've burned out on this social distancing and staying home. I'm ready for, get back in the swing of things and get a haircut scheduled. So I hope everybody's doing well and continues to do well. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, I see you, yeah, I see you.
I was there early, early. Councilwoman Court, do you have a
I, I just want to say something about Public Works. It's, I'm glad that you read the proclamation today about Public Works, because I wanted to thank them for picking up the ball and getting that landscape project done on the, at the old Bartlett Road. It looks wonderful, and once they picked it up, they did it very quickly. And so I just wanted to thank them for that. And that's all. Thank you.
Councilwoman Stockton.
I just want to copy what Duran said. I hope everybody had a great Mother's Day, and I hope everybody has a great week. And congratulations on all the proclamations we got approved this week. So I'm excited for each of those departments.
Mayor Pro Tem Harris.
Just happy Mother's Day yesterday to Janet and Jen and all the mothers out there. We had a great time yesterday. Kane Island residents raised some funds to feed the Katy Police Officers. They were thanking them for a great service that they provided to the area. And just echo what Councilmember Court had said about Public Works. We've been working with Elaine to try to get that old Bartlett Green space done, and it looked like they've done a fabulous job, and appreciate their efforts on that. Thank you.
Councilman Carroll.
I have no report.
All right. My report's pretty, pretty quick. I'd just like to once again thank, uh, Katy PD, our EMS providers and Public Works, all of them being the first responders that we depend on on a daily basis. Public Works, I'm very tickled to recognize y'all. You play such a big part in this community, and nobody seems to really understand what, what the importance is that y'all do on just a day-to-day basis. Only other thing I'd like to ask is that if everybody would please just keep, uh, Officer Jason Knox and his, especially his family, his wife and his two children in your prayers. They're going through a really tough time. That's all I've got. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Y'all have a wonderful evening.